We had a little Andrew Lloyd Webber in the first half of the program, our music of the night. Now we're gonna feature some Phil Schwartz and Danny Altman. This includes music from Tails and The Trick, Tell Me Here Before Christmas, Edward Scissorhands, Beetlejuice, and Spider-Man.
Hi, I'm Frank Caruso. Welcome to Along the Way. I'm at Drums and More it is?
It is.
Drums and More, and this is Rand Moore, and he is a resident of Oregon. And it's good to see you, Rand.
Thanks.
Now, can you tell us how long your store's been here in Manona? It's on Manona Drive.
Twelve years this month. We opened up just on the street by the PDQ at Broadway, and doubled the size about a year and a half later to add lesson rooms. And we were there five years, and we needed more space for more lesson rooms, and music lessons, I should say, and now we've been here about six years.
And what type of lessons do you give?
Music lessons on all of the instruments.
On everything?
On everything. Piano, brass, strings, guitar, drums, of course, percussion, hand percussion, mallet percussion.
Mallet percussion?
Mallet percussion, meaning xylophone, marimba, vibraphone. And one of our piano teachers even teaches accordion.
Fantastic. Do you get a lot of accordion lessons?
No, we have none.
But you're ready.
Yes, we're ready. We are all set.
If people want to call here to set up an appointment or find out about lessons, what's the number here?
222-DRUM.
222-DRUM, okay.
That's 3786.
And your website?
DrumsAndMore, that's drums-n-m-o-o-r-e dot com.
Got it. It's a good website. Now, today I'd like you, you were gracious enough to teach me, I've never played the drums, I'd like to have a little lesson, if you have time.
Sure.
First, I imagine, how should I hold the sticks?
Well, you can hold the sticks matched grip.
Oh, okay.
Or you can hold them traditional grip.
Like this? Now, how did Buddy Rich hold them?
He held them traditional grip. Actually, the traditional grip is your left hand changes, but your right hand stays the same as matched.
Now, what are some of the first, if I was taking a lesson, what would happen? Of course, you don't have six, seven, eight years to teach me this, but...
Well, we would talk about, you know, how to hold the sticks, that's right. And if we're sitting at a drum set, we might say, "How about a roll?" There are two or three different kinds of rolls that I think are important to play. A roll is a sustained sound on a snare drum or on a drum. So, my three examples, first of all, I would just show you, and then we'll talk about one of them. A buzz roll or a press roll is when I'm pressing into the drum with both sticks.
Wow, I feel like I should jump off the building after that.
You know, I was a drummer for Ringling Brothers and Barnum Bailey Circus for a half a year, no, I'm sorry, for two years, in '83 and '84, and you had to do the buzz roll for the high wire.
That's called a buzz roll.
Yeah. You would also play a waltz at the same time. But anyway, the double-stroke roll would be two taps per hand, and that's like this, right, right, left, left, mama, dada.
And then the last one is actually the simplest one, is a single-stroke roll,
which is right, left, right, left, right, left, and it would sound like the double-stroke I just played, but just single strokes. And that's the kind of thing you would use on a drum set, maybe the last, you see drummers all the time, on the last note of a song, when everyone's holding out that last note, and you're waiting for Mick Jagger to jump off the stage, you know, he might be playing, the drummer might be playing that on a floor tom. I'm trying to not play too loud and blow the mic away here.
Thanks. Now, well, let me do, what's the first one?
I think you should work on the press roll.
The press roll.
And you wanna, I think for the sake of ease, use the matched grip.
The matched grip, like this?
It's important to have the thumb pressing against the stick into the last joint of that index finger, and then you want to have a press sound. And maybe not quite so staccato, let it buzz a little bit, if you can.
Okay. How do you let it buzz?
Uh, by, maybe...
Just releasing it, or letting it...
Yeah, it's, right now the stick is being absorbed into your hand, but I think you want to just let that...
Oh, okay. Let's try this.
Yeah, now that would be an extremely loose buzz, yeah.
That's too loose, okay.
See? Now, that's a, this is a great chance for me to explain something, that you can have the long buzz with one hand, or a short one, and whatever you have, you just want to match the left and right. So you can, yeah, so you can have two short ones, but you just want them, they're gonna, you're gonna play left, right, left, right faster.
Hey. Hey. Hey, that's really good. It takes time. This is not as easy as it looks, from, you know, watching people. What else can you just teach me, something a little easier, or is that the easiest thing you could teach me?
I think, since we're sitting at drum sets, let's talk about a real basic drum set beat. Like a rock beat. So you've got a pair of hi-hats in front of your left foot, your left leg. Your left foot comes down, closes them together, and hold them together like that. So with your sticks, you can play on that closed sound. And so you've got two playing surfaces right here, the hi-hats and the snare. And then on your right foot, under your right foot, I should say, you have a foot pedal playing a bass drum.
I like this.
Your bass drum's bigger than mine. That's a 24-inch, mine's an 18.
And so you're getting a different sound.
Yeah, yours is deeper.
Okay.
And...
More intense?
Roll out the barrel, we'll have a barrel of fun.
Ah-ha!
Roll out the barrel, we got the blues on the run. Singing to the terror, singing out a song of good cheer. Now's the time to roll the barrel, 'cause the games are here.
The mini fingers of Johnny Ranger.
Tito, how come you're not doing the polka?
Do it again, Johnny.
How about Big Al?
I like it. Big Al's turn.
Big Al's turn.
Good. Woo! Utterly amazing!
Utterly, very good.
Roll, roll out the barrel, we'll have a barrel of fun.
Ah-ha!
Roll out the barrel, we got the blues on the run. Singing to the terror, singing out a song of good cheer. Now's the time to roll the barrel, 'cause the games are here.
Wow.
Hi, I'm Frank Caruso. Welcome to Along the Way. I'm at Drums and More, it is?
It is.
Drums and More, and this is Rand Moore. And he is a resident of Oregon. And it's good to see you, Rand.
Thanks.
Now, can you tell us how long your store's been here in Monona? It's on Monona Drive.
Twelve years this month. We opened up just on the street by the PDQ at Broadway, and doubled the size about a year and a half later to add lesson rooms. And we were there five years, and we needed more space for more lesson rooms, and music lessons, I should say. And now we've been here about six years.
And what type of lessons do you give?
Music lessons on all of the instruments.
On everything?
On everything. Piano, the brass, strings, guitar, drums, of course, percussion, hand percussion, mallet percussion.
Mallet percussion?
Mallet percussion, meaning xylophone, marimba, vibraphone. And one of our piano teachers even teaches accordion.
Fantastic. Do you get a lot of accordion lessons?
No, we have none.
But you're ready.
Yes, we're ready. We are all set.
What, if people want to call here to set up an appointment or find out about lessons, what's the number here?
Two-two-two drum.
Two-two-two drum, okay.
That's three-seven-eight-six.
And your website?
Drums and More. That's drums-n-m-o-o-r-e dot com.
Got it. It's a good website. Now, today, I'd like you, you were gracious enough to teach me. I've never played the drums. I'd like to have a little lesson, if you have time.
Sure.
First, I imagine, how should I hold the sticks?
Well, you can hold the sticks matched grip.
Oh, okay.
Or you can hold them traditional grip.
Like this. Now, what did, how did Buddy Rich hold them?
He held them traditional grip. Actually, the traditional grip is your left hand changes, but your right hand stays the same as matched, right.
Now, what are some of the first, what would you, if I was taking a lesson, what would happen? Of course, you don't have six, seven, eight years to teach me this, but...
Well, we would talk about, you know, how to hold the sticks, that's right. And if we're sitting at a drum set, we might say, how about a roll? There are two or three different kinds of rolls that I think are important to play. A roll is a sustained sound on a snare drum or on a drum. So, my three examples, first of all, I would just show you, and then we'll talk about one of them. A buzz roll or a press roll is when I'm pressing into the drum with both sticks.
Wow, I feel like I should jump off the building after that.
You know, I was a drummer for Ringling Brothers and Barnum Bailey Circus for a half a year. No, I'm sorry, for two years, in eighty-three and eighty-four. And you had to do the buzz roll for the high wire.
That's called a buzz roll.
Yeah. You would also play a waltz at the same time. But anyway, the double-stroke roll would be two taps per hand. And that's like this, right, right, left, left, mama, dada. And then the last one is actually, the simplest one, is a single-stroke roll, which is right, left, right, left, right, left, right, left. And it would sound like the double stroke I just played, but just single strokes. And that's the kind of thing you would use on a drum set. Maybe the last, you see drummers all the time, on the last note of a song, when everyone's holding out that last note, and you're waiting for Mick Jagger to jump off the stage. You know, he might be playing, the drummer might be playing that on a floor tom. I'm trying to not play too loud and blow the mic away here.
Thanks. Now, well, let me do, what's the first one?
I think you should work on the press roll.
The press roll.
And you want to, I think for the sake of ease, use the matched grip.
The matched grip, like this?
It's important to have the thumb pressing against the stick into the last joint of that index finger. And then you want to have a press sound. And maybe not quite so staccato, let it buzz a little bit, if you can.
Okay. How do you let it buzz?
Uh, by, maybe...
Just releasing it, or letting it...
Yeah, it's, right now, the stick is being absorbed into your hand. But I think you want to just let that...
Oh, okay. Let's try this.
Yeah, no, that would be an extremely loose buzz, yeah.
That's too loose, okay.
See? Now, that's a, this is a great chance for me to explain something, that you can have the long buzz with one hand, or a short one. And whatever you have, you just want to match the left and right. So you can, yeah, so you can have two short ones, but you just want them, they're gonna, you're gonna play left, right, left, right faster. Hey.
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 Hey. Hey, that's really good. It takes time. This is not as easy as it looks, from, you know, watching people. What else can you just teach me? Something a little easier, or was that the easiest thing you could teach me?
I think, since we're sitting at drum sets, let's talk about a real basic drum set beat. Like a rock beat. So you've got a pair of hi-hats in front of your left foot, your left leg. Your left foot comes down, closes them together, and hold them together like that. So with your sticks, you can play on that closed sound. And so you've got two playing surfaces right here, the hi-hats and the snare. And then on your right foot, under your right foot, I should say, you have a foot pedal playing a bass drum.
I like this.
Your bass drum's bigger than mine. It's a twenty-four inch, mine's an eighteen.
And so you're getting a different sound.
Yeah, yours is deeper.
Okay.
And...
More intense. Hit that yours again.
And, and so, if you want to start a steady rhythm with, let's say, your right hand on the hi-hat. Every four beats, I'm accenting, one, one. Now, also on every four beats, when I'm accenting, I want the bass drum to come down on that beat. Yeah. And then on every third beat, which is halfway between that accented note, play on the snare with the left hand. So it's gonna sound like this, one.
We're multitasking. Oh, now we're getting it.
Now, I'm doubling the sound on the hi-hat.
Perfect. That's really nice. Yours sounded a lot better.
Well, I've been working on it.
A few years. Now, how did you, how old were you when you first started drumming?
I was nine years old, in the Red Brick Building at Oregon.
In the Red Brick?
In the Red Brick Building. Mrs. Warren's first year of teaching. And Joe Stratman was my teacher.
He was your teacher?
Yeah.
And so there were drums there, and...
There were drums in the elementary school bandroom. I was with Joe Stratman two years, and then Dick Churchill for two years, in seventh and eighth grade. Both were great teachers of drums and drummers, I believe, as well. I mean, they were just fantastic teachers. And then in high school, Michael J. Davis. And he was a professional drummer, professional jazz drummer.
Are they still using drums in school as much as they were when you were a young man, young boy?
I would think so, yeah.
I don't see them when I go to concerts.
You don't see them?
I don't see them. Of course, you know, it's hard to see, you're way back there in the seats, and it's hard, you're really sitting low, and everyone's up high, and you can't see, you can hear, it's beautiful, listening to the kids play.
I think the trumpet...
They're probably in the back.
Trumpet players have gotten taller.
Yeah.
That's what's happened.
Blowing all that hot air out.
Yeah.
So you started at nine, you had some good teachers. What had, were you, were you turned on to drums as soon as you started?
I was turned on to drums a little bit earlier, because I would go, when we would go visit my grandparents up north, my mom's brother had an old marching drum up in the, up in the, you know, his old room, his old bedroom. And that, that was exciting to see that. And then he had a conga drum, and he had girlfriends' names written on the conga drum head, and it was like, wow, they needed an old China symbol up there. So that kind of got me excited early on. And then going to the parades in Oregon, when the, when the band went by, that was something else, you know? The drummers that were a bit older than me, you know, were marching down the street, and it was exciting.
Do you remember when you played the drums for the first time in a band?
In a band?
Or, yeah.
Yeah, because that would have been, with some good, some good buddies from Oregon, we had a little trio. Tom Brown was a trumpet player as I was growing up, but he was also a guitarist, a great guitarist. And, and he and Dave T. and I would have a little guitar trio, drums and two guitars, and play Ventures and Hawaii Five-O and tunes like that. Yeah. Oh, you, want to hear that?
Yeah, let's hear it.
I can still do the intro.
Welcome.
Welcome, Dan.
Oh, that's good.
Yeah, thanks. Anyway, yeah, for seventh and eighth grade talent shows, we got that going.
And people loved it. Now, you said that was the Adventures or The Avengers?
The band was The Ventures.
And The Ventures, did they, are they the ones that created the theme for Hawaii Five-O?
No, no, on TV, it was someone else.
It was someone else?
But that was a big hit for them.
And it, and it sounds great.
Well, thanks.
Doesn't it? It sounds good. Now, so you had your band, you were going, the first gig, I'm using your language now.
Man, the first gig was...
Can you recall that?
I can, because I can think. Michael J. Davis was the band director until nineteen seventy-five, the year I graduated high school in Oregon. He left Oregon that year. But I was taking lessons from him. I would walk up from seventh or eighth grade and take lessons, I think, every Monday night at the high school. He got me, got me going early on the drum set. And then, I forget what year, probably my freshman year, he had the Oregon Band at the Coliseum for a hockey game. I don't know if it was a UW hockey game, probably. And, you know, he had to stay with the band, but he had a gig at the Oregon Ball with, with Mr. Baumann and Mr. Jensen. That would be people we know in the town of Oregon, Mr. Jensen, and...
Jerry?
Yeah, Jerry Jensen was the bass player, and, and Mr. Baumann, the science teacher. He had, they had a group, and he was playing at the Oregon Ball, and he couldn't make it, so he sent me. My mom probably drove me there. And the first tune of the night was Lemon Tree.
Little of that?
And I kept it going until he showed up.
When, after that now, I want to move on to your, your story here. How did you come up with the name Drums and More?
Well...
Did you come up with it, or...
I came up with, with More Drums. My mom thought Drums and More sounded good.
Which is your last name?
Yeah, Moore.
And more of it, because there's more than drums here.
Yeah.
And it's really a neat, neat name.
Thanks.
The Drums and More. You have a great store, I mean, you, you have a... Says we'll take a tour later, but there's drums all over, and then you have classes back there, and the kids coming in soon. And then your band. Now, let's get talking about your, your band here. This comes here, and you do your rehearsals?
Well, we're fortunate to have all this space and allow a couple of groups that both my wife and I work in and play in to rehearse here. And I'm a freelance drummer, so I drum with lots of different groups, wedding bands, and different things. But my love is with the Madison Jazz Orchestra, which, which some people would know as the Dotty Dumplings Big Band that played for a dozen years at Dotty Dumplings every Thursday night. When they tore Dotty's down to build the Overture Center, we started rehearsing here every Thursday night. And, and, and that's, that's a band comprised of high school band directors and musicians from the area, about eighteen or nineteen different people. And we rotate different people as needed. But playing the music of Stan Kettin and Count Basie and great listening music, not necessarily the dance music of Glenn Miller and that kind of thing, but more of a listening concert type of a, of a band. My wife is a sax player in the Ladies of Swing Band. They also, they're all female, big band, they also rehearse here. And she's also, my wife is also one of the piano and woodwind teachers here.
Woodwind teachers, okay. I'd like to remind people again, if need any lessons, to give Rand a call, and your number again here?
Two-two-two drum.
Two-two-two drum. Which is thirty-seven-eight-six, right?
That's right, right.
Now, any, is there anything you'd like to really play that you really love to play on the drums?
For you right now?
Yeah, for me right now.
Sure.
Is there something you'd like to, not too long, but just something that really kind of...
I'll play a little swing shuffle.
Swing shuffle?
Yeah. And...
Now, just let me ask you this. Can you play by ear, can you, if you hear something, can you play it? Or do you need...
Playing by ears, yeah, playing by ears is a, is a very big part of what, what I do and what maybe a lot of drummers do in, in the different kinds of situations a drum set player is in. You know, the drum set evolved from, from New Orleans and moved up the river with, with, you know, it came from having a bass drummer, a snare drummer, a cymbal player. And, you know, as things and technology allowed us to have one person play it all, it became the dance instrument, the American Dance Drum Set. So traditionally, drummers on a drum set played dance rhythms. You know, if you go back to any, any decade in the last century, twenties, thirties, forties, fifties, you know, the drum set was playing those rhythms. And dancers in drum, drum rhythms and beats go hand in hand, foot in foot, hand in foot, or something like that. So depending on the situation, you know, the band that I play with that I was talking about, the Madison Jazz Orchestra, I'll be reading, I read charts. They're very important, because the arrangements are more complicated, dynamics are...
And you have to follow them.
Oh, look at this young drummer here.
He's a drummer, a drummer to be, bud.
This is Brendan, one and a half-year-old Brendan.
You gonna, you gonna play the drums right now?
Do a little drumming. Can you play us a shuffle rhythm? His roll would have sounded smoother, but he wasn't holding... He's one and eight months tomorrow.
Really, he was really...
He was doing okay there, huh?
Marvelous.
We should, yeah.
Johnny Carson would say, "That is wild." I didn't know that.
I can check his schedule if you're interested.
I'm interested in having him teach me, actually.
Yeah.
He's, is he taking lessons, or have you just...
No.
Going around, I mean, he was picking all the same stuff.
He's, he's fortunate... He's fortunate to be growing up in, in the drum shop here.
Well, that is great. I loved what you just did. Do you have anything to say to our viewers today?
Say bye-bye.
You want to say bye-bye?
Bye-bye.
We're leaving?
Bye-bye, mom.
Your dad's gonna play one more tune here.
This is a little shuffle.
...
Good evening, everyone. It is Monday, August 17th at 5:33 PM. This is a meeting of the Oregon Village Board, which I'd like to call to order. And request roll call, please.
Grenier?
Here.
Redhauer?
Here.
Cool?
Here.
Bollig?
Here.
Woodrow?
Staten?
Here.
Carpenter?
Here.
Thank you. Item three is discussion, discussion possible action regarding proclamation recognizing Mark Bealow, Director of Public Works upon his retirement for his many years of dedicated service to the Village of Oregon. Mark is right over here, please wave to the audience. Make sure you all know who's here, he loves doing that, so. So I'm gonna read the proclamation, and Board will act on it. So proclamation says, "Recognizing Mark Bealow, Director of Public Works upon his retirement for his many years of dedicated service to the Village of Oregon, Wisconsin. Whereas the Village of Oregon is desirous of recognizing long-term employees, and whereas Mark Bealow was hired as a street laborer on January 15th, 1974, and whereas Mark Bealow was promoted to Assistant Director of Public Works on May 20th, 1986, and Director of Public Works on March 22nd, 1994, and whereas Mark Bealow has displayed through the performance of his duties the highest standards of personal ethics, professional competency, and dedication, and whereas Mark Bealow will retire on September 2nd, 2015, after serving the Village of Oregon and its citizens for 41 years and seven months. Now therefore be resolved that the Village of Oregon extends respect and appreciation on behalf of a grateful village to Mark Bealow for his years of service. Passed by the Oregon Village of Oregon and signed by the Village President the 17th day of August, 2015." So we will act on this in just a second, but first I think we should recognize Mark. I knew he wouldn't like that, but he has been truly exemplary. I think it's important to recognize that. So we would need a motion?
I'd still move.
I'd second.
Excellent, that's to approve this proclamation. Any discussion or comments? I know everyone agrees with what I've said, so. We all really appreciate Mark, so. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. So that's now history, Mark.
Please be controversy.
Well, it took a while to develop, but we got it. So item four is public appearances, and item eight, recognizing property owners who made the Oregon Rotary Bike Trail possible. And we will also recognize them on Saturday, August 29th at 10:00 AM at the bike trail ribbon cutting at the corner of Braun Road and Cusick Parkway. So that's, that's in plan there. So if there's anyone here, and I know Emily is, anybody else that, whose name I read, please be sure and wave and let us know. I don't, I'm not recognizing others on the list, but. So the people that helped with the bike trail, G.R. Lyons and Patrick Lyons from Lycon, that was with the easement along Cusick Parkway, which is kind of a, a rice thing toward the end, and they came through and got that done for us right away, very cooperative.
They saved us.
Yeah. Steve Lenz and Bruce Lupke from U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. The trail is on that property, so they were always cooperative and helpful with that, and very supportive because it does enhance their property. Norma Jenkins, 5400 West Netherwood. The trail did not end up on their property, but could have, as it turned out, didn't have to. But I first saw Norma and her husband at Copkey's when this all started. And I had planned on calling them, I saw them there, and I asked them about the trail on their property. And they both said, "We'd love to see that trail get done. We would love to ride our bikes into town off-road." So they've been supportive from the very beginning, so thanks to them. Lisa Robbins and Dora Keller. Lisa is a niece of the Keller family, and she reconne, represented the Keller family in our discussions with them. And we just recently heard from her, she was on the trail, and I'm glad she enjoyed that. Emily Harris, you want to stand up, Emily, so people know who you are? Emily is, thank you very much. Emily is the last property out by Fish Hatchery, and she was also very supportive of the bike trail. And I have to tell you, Emily asked a lot of questions. And I had a lot of questions to ask when I talked with her, but she had really good questions, and all of her concerns were about environmental issues with her prairie, the cover for the birds, and stuff like that. So her questions were really worthwhile, and I really appreciated her line of thinking as she worked with us to get that trail done. So again, Emily, thank you. From Department of Corrections, Keith Durst, Pam Surwee, and Doug Percy. Again, we are on their property with the easement for the bike trail where it starts and turns west from Cusick Parkway.
And also Cory from Deals.
And Wimmer Neiman, the second.
Yeah. Yeah, also Department of Corrections, Cory Flyer. So those are the people that were helpful with the bike trail. It was a long process, which Mike predicted it would be. It has been very much recognized by people in the community, that they're very happy with it, as well as from far away as Mount Orville, I know of so far, and I've been contacts from Madison. So it's been a good, a good community enterprise, and was well supported by the community. So I would like to thank all those people on that list. And I think we should also just take a minute and recognize Emily for her part in this also, and thank you for your enthusiasm for the trail. She called me the other day and said, "The trail's beautiful, but we have to water the plants." So, or the shrubs. So that is an obligation of the contractor that's doing that, so. And if it's not, I would have asked, and she let me know, so.
I'd just like to add countless hours that the staff and President Staten have spent on this trail. That's, they should be on this list, equally. They are now, I just added them, so. Thank you.
Thanks, Jerry.
Thanks, Jerry.
Yeah, I was gonna mention staff also, it was a lot of work. Mike made the comment right away, "Be more work than a road," and, and it was a lot of work. There was just a lot of stuff that goes into it, and it took a lot of time, and, and it did get done. And I'd also thank the Board, not everyone involved is here, because some have gone off the Board, but the, the Board initially was not completely behind this, but enough to keep it moving. And as the trail was more developed in thought and concept, there was total support from the Board in making it happen, to the point that the trail got blacked out, which we didn't anticipate happening, anywhere near this soon, but people have loved that, and it really facilitates use, so. And we're working, and Jerry in particular, with the county and Town of Oregon to get on over to the Badger State Trail, so we'll see how that plays out. Okay, anything else on bike trail? Okay, thanks to you. So go to item B. This is from the August 6th Planning Commission meeting. You want to take this, Jeannie, or do you want me to?
Sure, or it doesn't matter.
Go ahead, that's an awful lot for me to read.
Um, okay. So I'm supposed to, I need to read all this, I suppose?
Yeah.
Okay, so from our August 6th planning discussion meeting with Kyle Ladopolis, request from Oregon Parks Development, Inc. for the property located at 5201 Netherwood Road regarding the general development plan, PDP, regarding the rezoning of the property from RH Rural Housing to Planned Development, and the underlying districts to TR6, two family residential lots, and those are 106 to 117, SR4, which are single-family residential lots, 86 to 103, and 127 to 129, and SR3, and those are single-family residential lots, 104 and 105, 118 to 122, and lot 126, permitting 32 single-family lots and 12 duplex condominium lots within lots 106 to 117 on private roads with public utilities. So the Planning Commission recommends approvals, and I will read these as motions, or motion to approve. Ordinance number 15-03, this is an ordinance changing the zoning classification of property located at 5201 Netherwood Road from RH Rural Holding Conservation to Planned Development District. And then also Resolution number 15-17, approving the Oregon Parks Neighborhood First Edition Specific Implementation Plan.
Okay, thank you, Jeannie. And do we have a second on item number one?
I'll second that.
Thank you.
And see, for the record, Jeannie, is your motion saying that we should move for adoption? We're waving the first and second readings, and move for adoption of the arts?
That's what she meant.
That's what you meant?
I think so, if that's okay with staff.
Yep.
Okay.
That's what we'd like to, right?
Yeah, yep.
Yes.
Good, thank you. Okay, Ms. Ladopolis, you want to come to the microphone?
Kyle Ladopolis.
Do you have any comments to make about this going forward? Or I know there was discussion at the Planning Commission meeting.
Um, ooh, okay. Not to comment that loud. No, this is essentially cleaning up what was prepared back in 2007, 2008, you know, preliminary planted, but never final planted, for reasons of the economy. Scaled down a little bit as far as the density in the, in what used to be the PD lots, and really finalizing with a lot of help from staff, the, and implementing that alternative road profile. So, but no, no other comments other than that, unless there's questions from the Board.
I might just sum up, we had maybe three or four folks to speak at the public hearing at the Planning Commission, and all of the folks who spoke were property owners that are abutting the, the new development, and their concerns settled, or centered around tree removal. And so I thought the advocate did a very nice job of trying to assuage their concerns that this, this proposal saves 72% of the trees in that area. And just, some of the folks were just concerned because they, they didn't want to see it developed. So we had some of those folks come forward.
And the saving of trees is that, what we call the good trees, hardwoods, oaks, maples, and hickories, I believe, were the main ones. So there are other trees that will come out, but they're gonna be like box elders and buck thorns and stuff like that, so. That was all done, that's what the map is, that's in there, please. Anything else?
I had a question about the swales. What was the reason for the swales? Instead of the sidewalk abutting the terrace, the way you have it designed? I was just curious.
It's a roadway design that is, Dane County has been in favor of for a while. In general, it's to improve stormwater management and allow the stormwater to infiltrate in a more natural fashion, as opposed to a curb and gutter system. The rationale for putting the sidewalk on the other side of the swale, as opposed to having the pedestrians right by the roadways, because when you use a swale system, you, for the most part, get rid of the existence of a curb altogether. The point, the, the idea behind it is to have the water flow as naturally as possible into grassy or vegetated area, so that it can slow down and infiltrate naturally. So since you've gotten rid of a curb separating the side, you know, pedestrians and from the, from the road traffic, from the cars, it's a, I think it's a nice separation, and I think communities tend to like the idea of having a sidewalk on the other side of the swale.
And I would add, Doug, that that's something that the Planning Commission really encouraged the developer to do, because we were able to save a lot more trees with this sort of road construction. So it was, it was something that the Planning Commission actively was in support of.
Thank you.
And the tree survey was done by professional arborists, not, not by the developers, so. They went through a mark trees. Anything else? Okay, so we have a motion and second inside, for both readings and adoption for ordinance number 15-03, for the zoning classification property of 5201 Netherwood Road from Rural Holding slash Conservation to a Planned Development District. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, well, you're curious, thank you. Item two, Jeannie?
So I'd make a motion to adopt Resolution 1517. This is approving the Oregon Parks Neighborhood First Edition Specific Implementation Plan, known as an SIV.
Thank you, second?
I'll second.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, is it possible to ask questions?
Uh, this, this is not noticed that way, but I will allow people, if that's what you're here for, to come to the microphone and ask questions, yes? So Ms. Ladopolis, you'll have to come to a microphone here. You can stay right there, if you'd like to.
Thank you for allowing me to ask questions.
You're welcome.
My name is Karen Roberts, and I live at 5213 Netherwood Road, which is the property directly adjacent to the development that he's proposing. My, my notice of the mail, of the meeting, went to Florida, unfortunately, so I wasn't aware of it. But I went in and talked to Mr. Bealow a couple days ago about it, so I, he answered a lot of questions, and was very helpful for me. But I did have some questions, and I don't know if you can answer them, or if the Board answers them, or what. The first time I was aware of this was the other morning when I heard a steam shovel crane-type thing digging holes out there. And I went over there and asked them what they were doing, and then they told me, and then I went in and talked to Mr. Bealow. But originally, this was made in a Rural Holding Conservation Zone. And what was the, I, what was the purpose of this zoning?
Mark?
Typically, when a property is annexed, it's in the, it's in the township. And their, their zoning code is different than the village's. So typically what happens, it used to be transitional agle, we used to call it, but since we changed the zoning code, it's, it's Rural Holding now, but it's, it's a kind of a stepping point, or stopping, stepping point, I guess, transition point from rural into something different, whether it be single-family or multifamily, or whatever the case may be.
And the reason it's not being kept the other way, that you're granting the, the development of it?
Zoning reasons, for zoning purposes, you have to, because when the developer brings a property and he's not certain at that point what he's gonna do with it, what kind of development he's gonna have on it, so from, we call it a transition zoning, from Rural Holding to the multifamily or single-family, or whatever it is, and then you rezone it to that when the developer is ready.
Okay. And what is the exact, you, you talked about the nature of the storm management area. Is this going to be similar to the one further to the east on Netherwood Road? There's a pond there, is this gonna be a... pond there. Is this gonna be a dry or a wet management zone?
I don't know if you can answer that, Cale. At this, I haven't looked at the plans in detail, if they're, it could be a combination of both.
Yeah, I think, I think both of these, I think both of these will be a combination of both.
I guess I'm interested in this one.
This, I think this will be wet for at least part of the time, yeah.
Okay. And, and have you made any accommodations, like for mosquito treatment or anything like that, if it's going to be a wet stagnant area?
We have not. We haven't had a problem with our stormwater ponds. The water tends to turn over often enough, the mosquitoes have not been a problem.
Okay. What about as far as the hazard for, like, children? How deep is it gonna be?
They're typically maybe three feet. They vary in depth, depending on how, depending on the ground conditions, infiltration, possible infiltration conditions, they will vary, but there's, there's always a outfall for it when it rains, and it's, it can move to the, to the regional facility.
Well, would there be a fence around the thing?
No.
No fence?
No.
Okay, would there be a fountain or something in it to keep the water from being stagnant?
No, it'd be very similar, like I said the other day, to the one that Stalin, this development created it down at the Cross and Methodist Church at Jefferson and Alpine Parkway.
Okay. And then what is a duplex condominium lot?
As I tried to explain the other day, it's a, there's multiple things you can call them. Some people call them zero-lot line lots. It's basically a duplex, and if the developer or the future property owner wants to divide that duplex into two separate parcels with parcel numbers, they come to the Planning Commission and ask for what they call a zero-lot line application. They, basically all it is, is drawing a line down the center of the duplex on the lot, separating on paper that duplex into, so it can be sold independently, so it's not connected like a, well, it is, but it's, the banks look at it differently. It's not, it's not a condo.
It's not a condo, so there won't be a condo association?
I would assume, if there's anything, it'll be a homeowners' association in that area.
Okay.
But that's only an assumption, I don't know that.
And, and does anybody know what the price of the lots are gonna be for the duplex area?
Gentlemen, I'm next, you could probably answer.
I, uh, you know, for the duplex lots, off the top of my head, they would be comparable to duplexes that were sold in the abutting neighborhood, but I don't remember those prices off the top of my head. For the single-family lots, I would say they would start at the, if you look at the southern smaller lots, those are entirely comparable to the existing lots that they're facing in abutting on the existing development, so I would say those prices would be very comparable. I think they're running right around in the eighties now. As you go up and you have larger wooded lots, those will definitely be more expensive. You know, I'm, I will wait and see what price we set with the broker, but you know, more like in the low hundreds, I would say.
But what about the duplex lots?
Hmm, the duplex lots, I would have to check and see what we sold the, sold the duplex lots for in the, in the other part of the neighborhood.
And are they going to be double-story or are they single-story?
I think the, the footprint that we, the way we designed the lot size is for something very comparable to the existing duplex, the duplexes in the existing neighborhood. I don't think there's, really because of the size of the lot, I don't think there's much room for creativity with what you can do.
So they would be two stories?
Those are...
Those are single-story.
Those are single-story ones, yeah. If you just, if you take a drive through, through the existing neighborhood, right, there's some, um, I don't remember if those, those were like R4, or by the old designation, that are being built currently. Across from those are duplexes, very comparable, and lots very comparable to what these ones are. The reason for the, these are on a condominium, and the reason for the condominium association is essentially to maintain the private road, which is kind of a glorified driveway, giving access. It's not, um, it's not really, it doesn't change the nature of the lots, which are still pretty standard duplex lots, but we do have a private road, so, and that needs to be maintained. It's not gonna be maintained by the village, so it needs to be maintained by the homeowners.
Okay. And how will, will the duplexes be facing? Will they be facing the road itself?
They'll be facing the, they're essentially gonna be facing that private road.
Okay, okay. Those are my questions. Thank you for allowing me to ask them.
Sure. Thank you for being here. Was there anyone else here for this? Questions? Okay. Okay, so, yes, Hans, you need to come to microphone.
I haven't looked at the plat of this, but I know that in some cul-de-sac neighborhoods that have been laid out in the past, basically, no, there was no provision made for like a sidewalk, some of the other older neighborhoods in Oregon, and I was wondering whether the board and the planner have given thought to that, to make sure that walking routes are as direct as possible, and that there are easements between lots as, as appropriate.
Yeah, comments on it, yeah.
There's sidewalks throughout this development, and there's also bike path, pedestrian path between the Presbyterian Church out there, going through the woods to the, the new street, and then back out to Alpine Parkway.
Okay, okay, yeah, I think I actually looked at this when Nick was in a long time ago.
About 2007.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion, a second, for Resolution number 15 dash 17, approving the Oregon Parks Neighborhood First Edition Specific Implementation Plan. Any questions or comments from trustees on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, you're curious?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, item C, discussion with Andy Wyland from Oregon School District about permit fees and so on, and stormwater improvements. Andy has asked if we hold that for another meeting or two before we do that?
Yes, yep.
And item D, was the application for Class B permitted malt beverage license with the village clerk in the Village of Oregon for a property at 100 North Perry Parkway, the Oregon Ice Arena, and possible board action. Will be no board action on this tonight. The request for the license has been withdrawn and put on hold. Item one is a public forum to discuss this license, and we will hold that public forum right now, in case people did show up to talk about this, they didn't know that it had been withdrawn, that maybe ones would like to talk about this, it can happen right now, because it was posted and listed that way on our agenda. Anyone wish to take part in the public forum on the Class B permitted malt beverage license request for the Ice Arena? Okay, you're the pro.
No.
You'll need to come to the microphone, please.
When will that not be withheld anymore? The, the, is it withheld forever now? Is that the end of it?
No, they, they may come back with another request.
Then what?
We don't know.
Okay. There's no sense talking about it now, then, in my opinion.
Yeah, well, that's fine, but we did want to give people a chance, we wanted to, to address the board. Quentin?
Could you please give us the, the process that this has gone through to request a, a delay?
Yes, we received a quest, request from a person on the Ice Arena Board of Directors, asking to take the approval of the license off the agenda tonight, much like we got Mr. Wyland to say with item C, that he would like to hold this to a future meeting.
And so then will the public be notified with due process of, of when this is going to come to the board?
Just like this one was, yeah? Yeah, everything is noticed. We can't do anything without noticing.
Well, I understand that, but I mean, will there be appropriate communication so that, you know, it's not just a notice, but you know, the newspaper will be able to discuss it, so that, you know, I, I'm just curious about the delay, that's all.
Now, you could check with the Hockey Board of Directors if you'd like to on that, and I can't speak what the newspaper will do. I would guess they will mention it, but I'm not sure that they will, but it'll go through the legal noticing process, just like this process to...
Okay.
Do the same thing.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else? Yes, sir. If you please just identify yourself for the record and make the comments.
Richard Gesteland. Do I understand correctly that there is a school operating on the same premises as this Ice Arena?
There is.
I see.
It's the alternative school.
The alternative school.
Yeah.
Has the issue been raised that there might be a conflict between the serving of alcohol then in this building, given certain ideas regarding the welfare of these students?
Yes, that has been talked about by the board, both earlier and at the present time, and our attorney has researched it thoroughly, so Matt, if you want to comment?
Sure. From a legal standpoint, there, there is potentially an impediment to the issuance of a license for this facility under the statute if the front entrance of the Ice Arena recreational facility is within 300 feet of the entrance to the school-related facility. That's an actual legal issue. I don't know tonight whether that 300-foot distance is, is there or not, so that, that's potentially a legal impediment to the issuance of the license. I know that the board has, aside from a policy, or a legal matter, the board has been considering the question of whether or not, as a matter of policy, it's an appropriate location for, for an alcohol license to be issued, and that decision hasn't been made yet. That was one of the reasons the public forum was scheduled before a decision would be made. So there is potentially a legal issue, and then there is also a policy question.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any comments with the board at this time?
Well, the only comment I would make is I, I'm really excited about how the communities come together and the things that unify us on this issue. You know, one thing I heard from everybody was, we care about our kids, and we want to make sure our kids are safe. I heard that we recognize that certain youth are at risk for various different reasons, and, and especially those kids need to be protected from alcohol and from alcohol advertising. And I also heard a lot about the importance of the Ice Arena to the Village of Oregon, and how everybody wants to make sure that the Ice Arena stays viable, so I'm excited to continue the conversation of how we're gonna keep our kids safe, and provide them recreational outlets, and keep the Oregon Ice Arena viable for the village and the village residents, and focus on what unifies us, as opposed to what divides, not only on this issue, but on all issues that come to the board.
Anyone else wish to comment? Okay, we'll go on to item five, and we'll stop for that, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Item five is approval of minutes. Item A is a motion that the village board acknowledged that the minutes of the special meeting of April 23, 2012, the special meeting of April 29, 2013, and the regular meeting of May 6, 2013, as prepared by the village clerk's office, are the official minutes of said meetings, so we need that from someone as a motion.
I'll, I'll second.
Thank you.
And I feel really good about that, thanks to Matt's wordsmith and stuff.
Yeah. We got it. We're getting it figured out.
Nailed it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, thank you. Item B, 2015, minutes from the special meeting of July 27, 2015. Need a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any additions or corrections?
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Item six is approval of vouchers. We have vouchers tonight, the general operating fund, in the amount of $123,781.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Rock, paper, scissors?
Yes.
Yes.
Turbinder?
Yes.
Walden?
Yes.
Renee?
Yes.
Stady?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Item seven is community input.
I have just a quick question.
Yeah.
It was just more of a, of a, I just don't know. If you give me a second. Oh, I know what it was. It was the Amazon expenses on the credit cards for the various different employees. The most, the most the description said was Amazon.
Thanks, Matt.
For the...
It's for, it's for the library.
It's probably for the library.
Yeah.
What, do you remember one of the employee names?
So, for example, Santner, page one of the cash disbursements, credit card journal, Santner's got three Amazon orders.
Davison.
Kocurek.
Those are all purchases at, at the library, and unfortunately, I don't have those vouchers with me to give you more specifics on what they purchased.
If I can, if my, I might add, in the past, there have been purchases of books.
Typically, there, yeah, typically, and those are approved by the, by the library board for payment.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, item seven is community input. Anyone wish to address the board this time? Hans?
Hans Neldner, is this on? 133 West Lincoln Street, Oregon. I have, I have two items. First, regarding, regarding the Ice Arena, this, this is out of order, but I would like to say something. I was on the board years ago when this was being kicked around, and I think it's important that it stand on its own, pay for itself, or let it go, and not keep nudging along. I remember discussions about alcohol being served there years ago, and like, no way that was not gonna happen, and here we are. I know another trust, former trustee who has the same concern, and user said earlier that everybody wants to keep the Ice Arena here. I think it needs to stand on its own, given, given all the benefits and all the subsidies the village has given it, so that's the Ice Arena issue. The main reason I am here, however, regards item number nine, nine F, Dane County Transportation Committee is hosting transit listening sessions around the county. I think all of you have received a notification of this. It's on the 31st of August, I believe. I believe that does, is not conflict, does that conflict with the village meeting, or not?
Not at this point.
At this point. Okay, so...
Can I have a break with tradition?
I'll find, I'll find a reason for a meeting.
I, I thought I didn't hear much.
That's a fifth money, we don't normally meet them, but sometimes we have enough to that we do meet.
I think I overheard some muttering about some slave driver village president holding a third meeting. I don't know who it was.
I think his administrator mixed up.
Thank you, Steve.
Okay. Anyway, I'd like to urge you all to go, and I want to outline, add to that a challenge as to how you go there. Let me explain this. I believe all of you have driver's license. You qualify to drive, and you can afford to drive a car, and you probably do most of your errands and trips, day-to-day stuff, with the car, and so you have the luxury of not knowing what life is like for people who can't drive, people who can't afford a car, people who have, don't have family or friends to chauffeur them. So if you go to this meeting and drive to it, which is the reasonable thing to do, it's the convenient thing to do, if you're, you're busy, you can say this is, you know, I don't, I don't have time to not drive, you are, I submit you'll arrive with a particular frame of mind. So if you go to this meeting and drive to it, which is the reasonable thing to do, it's the convenient thing to do, if you're, you're busy, you can say this is, you know, I don't, I don't have time to not drive, you are, I submit you'll arrive with a particular frame of mind. If you tell yourself, you withhold from yourself the right to drive to this, say, I'm gonna go there without a car, you will have a very different frame of mind. I think it'd be a much more productive one for this meeting. Offhand, I don't know whether the, these transit hearings will, these transit hearings and proposed funding mechanism will come to much. I mean, I'd see severe problems with it. Unfortunately, the state legislature and governor pulled the plug on a Dane County transportation authority that had been created back in 2009, and so whether we have at this time a foundation for getting transit service to Oregon again, I don't know, but I think it's important you folks engage yourself, not so much for the people who live here already, because most of the people who live in Oregon can and do drive. I want you to be there for the possibility... I want you to be there for the possibility of people being able to live here who can't or don't want to drive everywhere. So that's my challenge. Thank you.
Thanks, Hans. Anyone else wish to address the board? Okay, saying done, we'll go to item nine, which is proclamations and announcements. Item A is board comments. Anybody have comments tonight?
Oh, I wanted to say I'm continuing to get really great feedback about that bike trail. My neighbor just the other day told me what an amazing bike trail we have and how much him and his wife enjoyed their ride, so.
That seems to be the case in a lot of cases here, so that's good, good. I would mention too, the work on the tennis courts is proceeding. There are guys down there working hard, it looks like, and a lot of heat taking care of that. So that's going to get updated too. Anyone else?
I know that this is item G tangential, but I'll just bring up the work that Randy Glish is doing to fundraise, to repaint the water tower above the Welcome Center and how exciting it is and the fact that he's named it the Tin Man Initiative and how Tin Man refers to the type of water tower that it is. So just to make the community aware that that's going on right now and they're going to start to see more about it in the community and hear more about it from us, I'm sure.
Good. Thanks, Jeff. Anyone else? Okay, we'll go to staff comments. Item one, special board meeting on Monday, August 24th, instead of committee meetings.
That's to swear in the new police chief. That's the main reason for the meeting.
Is that a 5:00 PM, Mike?
5:00 PM, yep.
So that's done.
It's done. The commission approved Brian this morning.
Congratulations.
Which means Dale will be leaving and that's, but we'll see if that happens.
He's saying yahoo to that, but we're not.
We'll wait, we'll see how that all turns.
It's the first step in you leaving us.
Okay. Could be months.
Good years.
Okay, September, board meeting dates, Tuesday, September 8th and Monday, September 21st, just so we're clear on that.
So do you think, because it's Tuesday after Labor Day, will we have quorum for that, that meeting?
I'll be here.
I'll be here.
Thank you.
I apologize. I won't be here for either of those meetings. I'm traveling in Switzerland.
Okay.
I apologize. I know, somebody's going to do it.
You do it all for yourself.
But I will be here for all the, all the October budget meetings.
Thank you, Jean.
Great. Thanks, Jean.
I won't be for either of those meetings either.
Yep.
Darlene's going with me, I guess.
Darlene sent me an email, thank you. So we'll, we'll have quorum.
Okay, great, thanks. Okay, we'll go on to item nine, communication miscellaneous business. Item A, village's net new construction for 2015, any impact on the 2016 budget? Mike and Lisa, please.
So we're, as you can see from here, we're averaging about a little over 2% of net growth. And Lisa figured out that that is about $90,000 to $100,000 in new money for the budget next year, so. It'll be in the budget.
Yeah, great.
Is it spent already, Mike?
Probably.
I think you're asking the wrong guy, Mark.
It always has been.
You winked and yeah, it was gone.
Probably do more roads, right?
Yeah.
Okay, item B, status street projects and additional requirements for memorandum of understanding with the county.
Mark, can I talk about Janesville Street for a second?
If you want to, sure.
So, so we've had some concerns and complaints from businesses, residents in the Janesville, Wolf Street area where the county's doing that joint project with us, particularly with the, the closing of the intersection. And it brought to light that when the village, Mark and I have done these projects, I use the example, the downtown project, we did that back in. Oh wait, thank you. I mean, we had weekly meetings in the boardroom. Before, if we were going to close a street, you know, we sent out flyers, we had an engineer on staff that basically went door to door to tell people things were going to happen. And the county, you know, the county had two articles in the paper and they, the engineer went around and gave his business card to people. But I think, I think I emailed Josh and Jill's priest's office and I just said, I think going forward, we're going to want to set up some community meetings for the upcoming projects. So I just want people to know that when we do the next three projects with the county, we'll probably have a different communication approach and style in the future.
Yeah, basically, that's not going the way we would like it to, so we'll have more input the next time.
And Josh, they're open to doing that.
Yeah, yeah, they've been great to work with.
Yep, absolutely.
And I'll just add that, you know, I had a discussion with the highway director about that very subject on Thursday night after the board meeting. And he indicated, you know, he reiterated the fact that they followed their normal procedures and everything President stated and said. But however, it's not as comprehensive as we would have done here, you know, if we had been in charge of the project. So I, I think going forward, it's really great that we're going to follow, have a different plan in doing that. And I urge the board to get behind this jurisdictional transfer so that as we get closer to that transfer, we control, you know, as a matter of fact, we'll make it part of the agreement that we are in charge of the project. And we can do the hearings, we can do the notifications. And maybe we can get Mark to help us with that stuff, I don't know.
Probably not.
But anyway, you know.
I don't think that's going to happen, Jerry.
Yeah, if you're unhappy or we're inconvenienced with that, I apologize on behalf of Dane County. And we will do better going forward.
Yep.
Thanks, Jerry. Anything else on that?
No.
Item C, discussion of possible action regarding market street water main replacement change order number one, amount of $3,204.71.
I think we're going to table that, right, Mark?
Yes.
Okay. So we're not acting on that tonight?
No, number nine.
We'll go to item D, discussion of possible action regarding Oregon Area Fire EMS Commission request the village board's approval of purchase of truck and not to exceed amount of $39,000 for the fire chief, for chief's employment arrangement?
That's coming from a, as a recommendation or a request from the commission and is part of Jack's compensation arrangement in the district. It's a purchase of an F-150 truck.
Okay. So we need a motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
I'll second it for discussion.
Thank you.
I assume that was a budgeted item.
Yeah, so that is a, that is a budgeted item. It's possible that it might come out of 2% dues. I'm not 100% sure. What we're going to be doing is we're going to like, both those brush trucks are on their last legs and the question was how we were going to deal with that. And what we've decided to do is we've decided to sell the brush truck outright and not replace it. The brush truck would have been $75,000 and instead buy this pickup truck, which is about $39,000, so that's going to save us.
So, Jeff, I talked to Jack last week and I think initially he's going to hold on to that brush truck for a little bit of time yet.
Yeah.
But, but at some point, you're right, the trade-in would have happened, but he's going to hang on to that second brush truck for a while yet.
We're not going to replace it with another, with another brush truck.
Correct, that's correct.
Yeah, so, so, so what I want the board to know, I'm open to answering any questions, but what I'd want the board to know is that we were, we were originally going to sell the brush truck and, and the discussion was to replace it with another brush truck. And we made the decision to not replace it with another brush truck because we don't feel we need two brush trucks. They're not getting used that way and instead to replace it with a pickup truck. And it also was, this was expressed, it was expressed in Jack's contract that he would have use of a vehicle that was part of his contract. And so whether he drove the brush truck or the replacement brush truck or his pickup truck, that was the question. And from a money standpoint, it made, and from a utilization standpoint, it made more sense to get a pickup truck than, than to replace the brush truck. So thank you though for clarifying. Even when we sell the brush truck, I mean, that might be, I don't know, $2,500, $3,000, I don't know with the wear that it's got on it. It wouldn't be a whole lot coming in.
I, I think, I think when I talked to Jack about it, I think, you know, he's, he's sensitive to that people aren't, you know, connecting, getting rid of the brush truck with him getting this truck, but you know, he, so I think, I think it's part of the arrangement with him, when the district hired him, they're going to buy him a vehicle, so your explanation is accurate at that point.
Thank you.
Question?
Yeah, go ahead.
$39,000, does that include the lights, the siren, radios, all that kind of stuff? Or is that going to be coming back for 15,000 or 20,000 more to outfit it now once the $39,000 is spent to buy the truck?
So the truck will not be outfitted.
Okay.
It will not be outfitted at all. It'll be primarily used by Jack for his personal use. And any other use that the truck would get would be fire relate, would be fire service related, but it would not be an emergency response vehicle.
Okay. All right. So like, keep people going to classes, that kind of thing. Got you, okay.
And he also commented that he does not believe in the, putting the sirens on and going to a fire, so that there's lights on the truck.
Okay.
Because of insurance purposes.
Okay.
One final question, when, when I might, was the entire commission in favor of this purchase?
Yeah.
Thank you.
And now the, and so, and so once we as a commission decided what we wanted to do, because it's a joint board, each of the boards have to go back, each of the members of the commission have to go back to their boards and the boards have to vote yes or no through the commissioners, Darlene and myself, and then through Burke and Rutland and Village and Towne, et cetera. And then we'll come back and at that point, we vote on behalf of our boards. So we were all in agreement as commissioners, but we don't have the authority to make these kinds of decisions because of the dollar amount of the purchase. It's got to go back to the boards and then we represent the board vote at our next commission meeting. Settle, settle, makes sense.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? So we have motion second to approve purchase of a truck for fire EMS, not to exceed $39,000 for the fire chief for the chief's employment arrangement. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you all, from the commission.
Thank you. Seems like we're off to a real good start with the new chief, so that's a good thing.
I've gotten a lot of really good feedback and heard a lot of positive comments about the chief, specifically how visible he is. And I think people are appreciating that.
Yeah.
And how, and how visible the fire department is, you know, every, every month we get together and it's, a month doesn't go by that the chief hasn't been at a birthday party or the, the big turnout for the night out against crime.
Yeah.
Or, or he's at, he's at a job over at the BP station because something's going on and he wants to be where his firefighters are and he wants to know what they're doing. And he's very involved and very active.
Yeah, yeah, I've seen that too. So item E, discussion of possible action regarding ordering the bike trail sign. And that's the bike trail sign right there.
Yep.
Oregon Rotary Trail and the placards down below recognize the people that were instrumental in helping us make that happen.
Correct.
And there's a good chance that'll be ready by the time we do, when we do the ribbon cutting. It's being done locally by Bob, is it Bob's sign service or?
A Lundgren.
Can I ask where that's going to be located?
If you're at the corner of Netherwood and Cusick Parkway.
Yes.
And you start heading north on Cusick Parkway, there's a grassy opening on your left side.
I know where that is?
Yep.
What about the other end?
The other end?
The other end of the bike trail.
I, I think that's where the Rotary will be putting something at the Rotary Club.
Fantastic, okay.
They're working with Fish and Wildlife on that.
I've had a couple of people ask me, you know, oh, I went by there, I saw this asphalt path, what is that?
Yeah.
You know, so it's good that it'll be marked.
Oh yeah, it'll be marked.
What, what's the material? Can I ask that the sign's made out of? Is it a synthetic or wood or?
Mark, you remember? It's a synthetic type, it's not wood, no.
And that resin stuff they make all the signs out of?
Correct, yeah. Same thing as the Welcome Center sign is.
Oh, that's true, yeah.
Same material.
So that amount is $2,995, so we need a motion second, please?
So moved. Whoa.
Did you get that?
No.
I was excited.
Put down everybody.
It was first.
And a recommendation on the other end is a sign like in Mash, where you got the Arrow to Oregon, five miles, arrowed on to Towne.
Actually, we will at some point have mileage signs, but we're trying to, now that the board's going to word this to Bob, he may get this up by, by the 29th.
Yeah.
Didn't they have New York City on that?
New York City, Georgia, Atlanta.
We'll put Mark's work on that as well.
We will not go that far.
Put Mark's address on.
Freeport, Mark's house.
Okay, so we have motion second to approve this sign at the amount of.
Who made the motion?
Oh, I'm sorry.
We missed all that.
Pick somebody.
Doug will take two and Jerry will take the motion.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
And the motion is to approve the sign, $2,995. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item F, Dane County Transportation Committee hosts the transit listing sessions, that's on August 31st and we've received information on that. Item G, discussion of possible action, submitting EVG Foundation grant for water tower restoration project?
You know, I just have a quick point that I'd like to make with regards to the, the transit listening sessions. And I understand that we're kind of chipping away at all ends of the issue, we've been talking about it. But I, I'd really be interested at some point to see if there's any viability of using the train line that we've got right now to go up into Madison from Oregon. That's, I'm very curious about, about how viable that would be.
We've talked about that in the past, right now that, that corridor is only for freight. We've been told it'd be very difficult to change that with the rail line. I think the maximum speed is 10 or 15 miles per hour.
Well, and also there has, Pittsburgh has to get that uptown area developed. They, they got to get the users in there because the, we're thinking that once Pittsburgh has that there, then the train will, it'll be competitive for the train to come to the salt of Oregon. And actually, in our, in our Tiff district, we actually have a commuter station identified as a possible project.
Yeah, that's exciting for me.
So we've talked to Pittsburgh about this for the last 10 years, but it's kind of, there's going to need to have a lot more population in that area before it's going to happen.
Thank you.
Yeah, so that's on the horizon, but it's very farther off and some would like to see that, but it's out there. Okay, so item G is an action item submitting EVG Foundation grant for the water tower restoration project. I would think that Randy has written this and the amount requested is $15,000.
I'll make the motion to allow that.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any comments or concerns?
Where is the main event? Is that a name of a restaurant or?
That's going to be where Lillian goes into Mason.
That's Lillian's, okay.
Well, it'll be called the main event, but.
That's the downstairs meeting area down there.
Jerry, you can't skip ahead.
We're on item G.
Yeah.
We're only on G.
Yeah, let's skip ahead.
I was looking, where is he getting this from?
I know.
That's not the brand.
Jerry is impatient.
Jerry must have another meeting. It's like, I didn't see that. It's like, what?
Jerry's having a senior moment.
I don't want anybody to think I wasn't paying attention. I will answer your question.
I always pay attention, though.
He's having a senior moment.
Yeah. Thanks, darling.
So I comment, you comment. Okay, so any questions on the EVG Foundation grant? So we have the motion second to approve submitting that. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item A, it's the fundraiser for the downtown water tower, which is Wednesday, October 14th, from 5:00 to 8:30 PM. And that is at the new restaurant, which is.
Used to be Mason's on Main.
Used to be Mason's on Main.
Yep.
Any questions on that?
Not saying a word.
Item I, update the board regarding the sign ordinance.
That's, as, as promised, we're going to keep the board posted on that. We're going to be going to the chamber luncheon this month along with Mike Slavety and Jackie from Bandawalt to talk to the chamber members about the sign orders.
And I did have a question about signs that protrude from the buildings and how in certain communities, that's all the signs that they have. I think about Galena, for example, there, there's a lot of historic signs and that's the way the historic signs were done.
Yes, right.
Even the sign out in front of the bank downtown, you know, the one that has all the birds in it, that one protrudes and has for 100 years or whatever, since it's been up. So I, I had a business owner ask me about that and wanting to know more about why we wouldn't allow those types of signs in front of the stores.
So, Mark, you remember that, if that's allowed?
I don't remember.
I, I don't remember that.
I'd have to look back at the code, Jeff. I don't remember if precinct hanging signs, if they will, will be allowed.
That's fair. I'm springing it on you guys.
I can't tell you, I said in the planning commission that we talked about this, the changes coming, they're being proposed. Will allow businesses to have more signs than they have now. So we're, that's one thing we're excited about. And I do want to put this out there because I know a lot of business owners are worried about this, is that current signs will be grandfathered in. So they will not have to be changed until the structure of the sign changes. So, yes, the posts, yes. So wanted to get that out there before we start getting hate mail that all signs are going to have to be changed. And the planning commission took that step very deliberately. Our planner told us that it would take between 20 and 25 years for signs to become in compliance. And we said that was fine because we wanted, we didn't want this, did not want this to be an onus on business owners. So you'll get, you'll have to learn all more about the sign, sign ordinance coming forward.
Yeah, there'll be a lot of discussion of planning and then coming to us too, so.
What page is the election sign changes on?
It's in there. That is addressed. That, that is addressed.
I don't have to read the whole ordinance.
Okay, so, anything else on the sign ordinance?
Nope.
Okay. So item J, update regarding space needs analysis and Vandewall Civic Campus Plan?
So we have some initial numbers back from the architectural firm and, um, I, I need to email the architect and see, you know, when he's planning on having a final report for the board.
Yeah.
And Vandewall, uh, is going to the next couple of weeks start, uh, making contact with people in the downtown area for the civic campus plan project. Let's move along.
Uh, so one thing I wanna mention, um, and I'd be interested in your opinion, I'd be interested in Matt's opinion, but I'm the, the chair of the Oregon Community Resource Network and what we, what we do is we educate and fundraise, uh, for the basic needs of people that live in and around the village of Oregon, and our first initiative is to fundraise for the building of a food pantry. And I understand that the food pantry has been asked what their space needs are.
Yep.
And the reason I bring this up is I wanna make sure that there's never a conflict of interest between, between what I'm doing to try to fundraise for the food pantry and what I'm doing to try to move the civic campus plan forward.
I'll, I'll ask him.
Mike will check with Matt on that.
Thanks.
Good question, appreciate that. So it's good to be out ahead of that.
Yeah, gotta get out ahead of that.
Yeah. Okay, any other questions on civic campus plan at this time? I guess that report will be coming to us. Item K, Wisconsin Department of Administration's preliminary estimate of January first, two thousand fifteen population is nine thousand five hundred seventy-five. So we're creeping toward ten thousand.
Yep, we are, yep.
It's, uh, Mike Slavety told me our population growth has been very steady, um, as it goes and that's a, a plus for the community.
Well, I don't, I don't even think we're creeping, 'cause if you look at the last couple of years, I think it was two percent in each of the last two years, and, uh, if you tack two percent onto nine thousand five hundred seventy-five, and, and plus you think about this new development that's going in on the west side, we'll be to ten thousand by mid-sixteen.
Yeah.
Well, the two per, I mean, you went back to the two percent that we were talking about before.
Right.
That's value of construction, that's not population, and, you know, so you-
I was looking at several different numbers and I thought that they referred to homes built. Yeah, so I was just thinking, if we've got two percent increase in homes built and you think about how many people live in a home.
Right.
On average, if we were to do that.
But in that, in that net new construction's also commercial too.
Okay.
Mike, at one point you, I think, mentioned that at around ten thousand, there is a state law requiring a reorganization of the village government to be a municipality, is that correct?
I don't think I said that.
I think Steve gets to retitled the king.
I don't think I said that.
Are you thinking about the library that we have to?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's the library.
What, what'd you say?
I'm thinking of a mayor form of government.
You know, I, I think somebody was, somebody was floating that around. I, I never, I've never said that, 'cause I'm not sure that's accurate, so.
That's a great rumor though.
No, there, there are villages a lot bigger than that in the state. There are villages of sixty-seven thousand people.
Oh, sure, yep.
Well, Stoughton's only twelve and they have a mayor.
Well, it just depends on how you-
They're a city.
It depends on how you organize.
Just depends on how you organize your, your mayor.
Yeah, and I heard that years ago, like, people thought that we had to do, I, I-
Not, not so then.
I don't, no. I, I haven't said that, but I don't think that's true. I mean, I could look into it, but I don't believe that's true.
Okay.
I, I think Junie's right, I think there's, that's a magic thing for the library and all that, yeah. Which is, which is why they're taking the space study into consideration when they're, um, talking to the architects, so.
Okay, go, any other questions on that item? Item ten is reported committees, which we covered in item four B. Item eleven, that's not requiring action from the library board, July eighth, two thousand fifteen meeting and library director report. Those are in our packets for people who are watching, would like to see those. Item twelve is unfinished business, we have none. Item thirteen, new business, approval pending new operator license. These are approved by the police department at QuickTrip, page A, posar, and stop and go Jeffrey A. Dabson, so we need a motion second, please?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. And again, these are approved by the police department, are there any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you. We have some future agenda items listed that will come before us. Uh, one of the mains, ones for us to notice is our budget schedule, so we have those on our calendar. So item fifteen would be a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, we're adjourned, thanks everyone.
Yeah.